All right, I call the 2023 Annual Meeting of the Hudson School District to order. Last year at this time, the time of 6:30 PM was set, so we are following through with that. At this time, I'll introduce myself, I'm President Jamie Johnson, our Vice President, Bob Baumann, Kate Garza is our Clerk, Heather Logland Treasurer, and members Molly Powers and Megan Rosowski, and Rob Brown is not present, but that rounds out our School Board. Introduce our Superintendent, Dr. Nick Olet, who will be taking over the meeting here soon to select the Chairperson, and also here up on the podium, or up on the stage, rather, is our Chief Financial Operations Officer, Bonnie Stigman. So Nick, go ahead.
All right, so as we open up the annual meeting, one of the main things that needs to happen to start off the annual meeting is we need to elect a Chairperson. So at this time, I would entertain motions for anyone to be elected the Chairperson of the annual meeting. So this will be the first call for nominations for a Chairperson for the annual meeting.
I would nominate Jamie Johnson to run the annual Board Meeting.
All right, so we have a nomination of Jamie Johnson. I'll call for a second time for nominations for Chairpersons of the annual meeting. And now a third and final time, I'll call for nominations for a Chairperson for the annual meeting. So with that being said, Jamie, do you accept the nomination? All right, so we have a nomination for Chairperson of the annual meeting being Jamie Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. All right, Jamie, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thanks Nick. And actually, next up on the agenda, I'm not going to forget this time, is our Hudson School District Highlights, so I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Olet.
Oh, well, thank you very much. So, and I can't see the screen behind me, so I'm going to kind of motor on through. So I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to the second slide as we, hold on a second, I got to make it bigger, or I can't quite see it. So what you see on this slide is our strategic plan for the 2020-2020 to 2025 school years. And this is a strategic plan that we put in place after doing some focus groups and getting feedback from the community. It's broken into three different pillars, you know, focuses around our students, our staff, and our community. But also to the right, what I want to highlight is our mission as a, as a school district. We are dedicated to developing caring and contributing community members. We are collectively committed to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure that equitable experiences for all of our kids. The next piece on our, on our strategic plan is really our vision, and what is that, you know, what are we hoping to get to, and what does that look like? And it's, the Hudson School District empowers all of our students to cultivate their talents, embrace their passions, and leverage their learning to impact the world around them. You know, from the mission and vision, we come up with a set of value statements that is also found on our strategic plan. And it really, it kind of focuses around these, these seven different, these seven different areas. And not to read all of these to you, but as you can see, it's student-centered, we, community, empathy, collaboration, integrity, contribution, and purpose. And you can see what we mean by each of these different components or these different values as we are working to educate the children of our communities. I'm going to break this presentation down into kind of a, three different, three different areas, you can focus on our students, then talk a little bit about our staff accomplishments, and then our community accomplishments. So, but first, with our students, this past summer, just want to bring your attention to, we had over 785 students in K5 enroll in our summer school programming this year, which was really great to see. We had 183 incoming kindergarten students participate in our Intro to Kindergarten classes, which was a lot of fun. 375 middle school students this summer participated in summer school, and we had 80 children with disabilities receive additional supports through our Extended School Year program in multiple buildings throughout the summer. In addition, we had 772 students participate in Summer Swim, which has been a staple in this district and in this community for quite a long time. We had 346 children involved in our School Age Care Program, our Backpack Program, 295 of our high school athletes participated in our Raider Elite Strength and Conditioning Program, and we had 203 students participate this summer in music camps. And so even though school was out for the summer, we still had lots of kids doing lots of wonderful things in our buildings. As we move on to achievements related to our kids, there's a couple of things, some things I want to touch on, and we had many, many, many achievements as we work through this. The district exceeds expectations on the state report card, the 76.3 rating, highest in the area. We had a 21.5 ACT composite score compared to the state average of 19.4. 190 AP Scholars with 10 AP Caps on diplomas and eight research and seminar certificates. The high school had a five-year high in number of AP students taking exams, 672 taking over 1,100 exams, so quite, quite impressive with those achievements. We did have two National Merit Scholars this year, which is, is very impressive. There are districts that might go 10 or 20 years between National Merit Scholars, and we had two in one year. The high school was recognized as the distinguished project lead the way school in the state of Wisconsin. Our elementary school math achievement is above the 95th percentile in the states. We are amongst the top 5% of school districts in the state in elementary math achievement. Our middle school math achievement gained nearly five percentage points in proficiency, and we're definitely making strides to continue to improve at the middle school level. In addition, student activities, as we look at some of our student activities, our FFA 2023 Hall of, Hall of Stars chapter, we had High School Forensics Distinction in Speech Award. We had DECA, and 11 students advanced to the, to the international competitions. Quiz Bowl was, had a High School National Championship qualifier. Both our middle school and our high school Science Olympiad qualified for state, 7th and 8th grade eCyber Mission qualified as well, and our middle school Future Problem Solvers. In addition, we had Destination Imagination National and International Qualifiers. So a lot of great things going on there. When we look at, on the athletic side of the house, we had state champions with our Raiders, dance team in Kickin' Jazz. We had a boys swimming, we had an individual champion as well, and wrestling, we had an individual state champion as well. We also qualified multiple teams and multiple individuals for the state tournament from girls golf, boys soccer, girls tennis, boys and girls cross country, our cheer and stunt team, gymnastics team, boys and girls hockey, girls wrestling, boys tennis, and track and field. And so had tremendous, tremendous competitors all the way across the board. The other thing I want to note is we were conference champs in the Big Rivers Conference, and it's a tough conference known for athletics in football, boys soccer, girls swimming and diving, girls tennis, boys basketball, girls basketball, boys swimming and diving, wrestling, baseball, and girls soccer. So definitely the Hudson High School students brought home their, their share of conference championships as we look at athletics. When we think about our staff, just to give you a little bit of an overview of our staff, we have over 600, sorry, 762 certified and support employees. This year, we welcomed 28 new certified staff members. That's down from past years, so we did not have a very high turnover rate this year, which was great to see. We had 37 new support staff positions as well. And we also hired two new administrators, both at the assistant principal level, one at the elementary and one at the middle school. A little bit also about what our staff does on a daily basis, we, outside of just educating children, because I think a lot of times people think of school as just the educational part, or the nine to, nine to 350 kind of component, the district served over 2,400 lunches every single day. 3,400 kids every day are transported in our district to and from school. We have over 725 children in our before and after-school care program, and our facilities and grounds is, is working on supporting the planning for the referendum that was passed in April as we work to do, it's actually $44 million in construction at EP Rock, North Hudson, and Hudson Middle School, 29 of which is paid for by the referendum that, that passed this past spring. Also, staff recognition, as we had middle school teachers Kelly Hackbarth Miller and Samantha Peterson receive a Herb Cole Teacher Fellowship Award, which is very impressive. It's impressive to have one, and we had two. We had five school staff receive Education Foundation of Hudson Star Grants for innovative classroom projects, which was great to see. And teachers Paulette Spafford and Linda Rose receive Star Excellence Awards. So again, great things going on with our staff. Football Region Assistant, Regional Assistant Coach of the Year Neil Hatfield. Wrestling Coach Chris Hansen was named the Big River Conference All-Time Winningest Coach with 107 and 7 career record. And girls basketball coach Jess Finas was inducted into the Gus, Gus Davis Athletic Hall of Fame, and so she's done a great job with our, with our girls basketball program. And we talk about our community, we just, as the Board remembers, we were selected for the 13th consecutive year for the Best Communities for Music Education by NAMM. We've had 20 community business partnerships that provide work in skilled job training, both for placements of our kids in our transition programs, and also kids that are in internships and apprentice programs in, from our high school as well. We had a wonderful, in the picture you can see on the right, we had a wonderful day where we had over 150 community members came in and worked with kids on interviewing and job-related skills. And so it was a great event that was, was held as well. In addition, we also tripled our attendance at this last year's Celebration of Nations events hosted by our English Language Learner Program and Department and, and the families. And so it was really great to see all of the different nationalities and countries that, that attend the Hudson School District represented, and people learning more about where all of our kids are coming from and what they're bringing. And that kind of sums up our highlights for the year. Many, many wonderful things that our kids have been a part of, our staff been a part of, so we have many things that were, were very fortunate. It really, people will ask me a lot of times, what is the state of the district? And it's easy to respond to that. The state of the district is strong because our kids are strong, our parents are strong, our community is strong, and we're very fortunate to have such great kids, such caring parents, and such a supportive community. So I thank you all for listening to the presentation, the hundreds that are in attendance today, and those that are watching at home. So that's all I have. Mr. President.
All right. Thanks for the highlights, Nick. And next we turn over for the district financial overview to our Board of Education Treasurer, Heather Logland.
Thank you, Jamie. So good evening. I'm Heather Logland, and I am honored to serve as Treasurer of your Hudson School Board. As a school board, one of our biggest responsibilities is oversight of school finances, working to ensure that our students, staff, and families have the resources they need to be successful. Dr. Olet referenced at the beginning of his remarks, our district's mission and vision, and I think it bears repeating. Through our mission statement, the Hudson School District collectively commits to providing a rigorous, student-centered environment to ensure equitable experiences for all students. Our vision is to empower all students to cultivate their talents, embrace their passions, and leverage their learning to impact the world around them. Our district is thoughtful about how it puts its financial resources, including your tax dollars, to work, aligning these expenditures with our mission and vision. In just a minute, Chief Financial and Operations Officer Bonnie Stigman will present the 2023-2024 Proposed Budget for the Hudson School District. Before she does, I want to share just a few thoughts. First, I've said this before, and it is worth saying again, school financing in the state of Wisconsin is complicated, with dollars coming from numerous local, state, and federal sources based on complicated formulas that do not always benefit districts like ours, where presently, property values are increasing and enrollment is decreasing. For us, the outcome of this complicated approach is that the biggest chunk of our funding, about 62% of the proposed 75.6 million-dollar general fund budget for this year, comes from local property taxes, from all of you who live within the boundaries of this district. At the end of the day, we hope you feel great about the investment you are making in the Hudson School District, that you're confident that your tax dollars are being used well. So in just a moment, Bonnie will go through the proposed budget, highlighting some of the most important considerations we've discussed as a board. I want you to know that while we as a school board have spent considerable time reviewing this year's budget, we're also having conversations that look far beyond this year. We're having conversations that consider the financial impact of continued declining enrollment on our district, especially when coupled with a continued increase in property value. We're having conversations about how we can best attract, retain, and support the very best teachers here in our district. And we're having conversations about how we can best support the social, emotional needs of our students and our staff, including those in need of support and services during times of crisis. As we face the challenges before us, we as a community are going to continue to need to make difficult decisions. Earlier this year, you voted to support a capital referendum that will enable us to make critical investments to several of our buildings. Thank you. At the same time, we didn't pass an operating referendum, so we will continue to have conversations with you about the needs of our schools, conversations with you as a community about what you want our district to look like five, 10, 25 years from now, and about what kinds of financial resources will be needed to make that happen. I hope that you will all take an active part in these conversations. I hope that you, like me, not only as a school board member, but as a taxpayer and a parent, continue to feel proud, not only of the excellent outcomes we are achieving, but also of the way that we continue to strive for improvement, and of the way we are managing our financial resources, especially through challenging financial times. On behalf of your Hudson School Board, I thank you for your continued support of the students and staff of the Hudson School District, and I am pleased to support the recommended budget for 2023-2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Good remarks. Appreciate your efforts in that regard. Next up, we have presentation of the proposed 23-24 budget, which was just approved by the Board about an hour ago. But Bonnie, why don't you take us through that? And then following your remarks, you'll be present for any questions that come up during the hearing on the budget, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
So as Heather had indicated, over the last six months, the Board has spent a great amount of time developing the operating budget. They've made a lot of tough decisions, but I think we've landed in a really great place. But as we started, some of the main factors that were facing the district, revenue limit restrictions, we did receive an increase of $325 per pupil. Unfortunately, that's not kept up with the Consumer Price Index, but it was definitely better than the last two years where we were frozen. Declining enrollment still continues to affect the district with a three-year average declining enrollment that directly affects our revenue limit calculation. Student services and student learning continue to evaluate programming to ensure that all student instructional needs are met. Another factor facing the district is the retention and recruitment of staff. The Human Resources Department and the Communications Department have done an outstanding job of recruiting staff through customization of marketing for specific positions, implementation of retention bonuses, and the approval of a competitive staff compensation package. The district has also continued its commitment to maintain class sizes within the established guidelines. And lastly, this will be our last year with the availability of ESAR funds. So those were some of the main factors facing the district this year. As I had indicated, the main driver of our revenue limit calculation and equalization aid is student enrollment. This graph outlines the trends that we've seen in the Hudson School District. The enrollment decline has been offset since the 2017-18 school year with the commencement of 4K programming in the district. But as you can see, again, we will have declined, we are estimating a decline in enrollment for this upcoming school year. When we look at our revenues, the main funding source of the district continues to be the local tax levy, which is protected at 62%. The next largest source of revenue is the state equalization aid, followed by the federal sources. And the federal sources, the majority made up from the ESAR funding. Some of the highlights in our revenue changes, we've had a great deal of increase in our projected earnings this year, which was almost $1 million more than what we had budgeted. We are seeing an increase in open enrollment in students, so that brings revenue to the district. We've had a reduction in our Fund 27 Special Education Transfer. And although that's not a reduction in the, the spending for special ed, it's a reduction of what we need to transfer to offset that budget. And then we did have a pretty big shift of revenue from the state equalization aid to local property this year due to the state formula. This graph outlines our general fund expenses. The main portion of our Fund 10 operating budget is designated for salary and fringe, approximately 66%. The remaining large expense categories are purchase services, purchase services, which is mainly transportation, independent contractors, and that transfer into the special education. Highlights of our district expenses, staffing reductions, the Board did approve approximately $800,000 in reduction in staffing reductions for the school year. There was, there will be a reduction in our ESAR spending. We are down to $1.1 million, and we do have a plan in place to utilize those funds this year. And, and the good news, we've had a decrease in our open enrollment out students. So we are seeing, you know, kind of a good thing that we have more kids coming in from other districts and less leaving. So that's great This is a really important factor facing the district. We do have about $173 million of new construction. Although that does, that does affect us in our equalization aid formula, it does offset the tax levy as we spread it out amongst the district. So that, that's a really good sign for our district to have such a strong growth. And that's broken down by each municipality in our district. In addition to the new construction, the district is projecting a 10.2% or approximately $627 million increase in equalized property value. Again, that doesn't help us in receiving equalization aid, but it does help us as we spread our tax levy throughout our community. The state average is 13%, so we are under the state average this year, but a healthy growth for our community. And again, this is broken down by each taxing district. This is a pretty, this is a summary of all the long-term debt that the district has. So as we start this year, we have about $85 million worth of existing long-term debt after we approve our levy that will reduce to $73 million by the end of the year. But the obligations are tied to the high school, the top three are from the high school project, and then that 24.1 is from our most recent borrowing. And then just another, a little update on the capital referendum updates, the district has entered into a contract with Bray Architects to be the architect of our project. Margaret Johnson has been selected as our construction manager. Site and facility planning has commenced, so we've been working on that, if I'd say about the last six months, for North Hudson, EP Rock, and Hudson Middle School. So plans are moving forward. And initial work on these projects is scheduled to commence in the spring and summer of 2024. More often asked how we compare for our mill rates in other districts in CSU 11. So here's a graph of our, where we range, based on last year's. We don't know where everybody's going to fall this year, but we are, last year we were at 8.84. So we're kind of to the left a little bit, but pretty right in the ballpark. This upcoming year, we are estimating that our mill rate will reduce from 8.84 to 8.53, and that's a 3.5% decrease. So after we reviewed the budget that's outlined in the packet, we would ask that the proposed resolution to set the levy for the 23-24 school year would be at $58 million, $14,814. That is broken down by the general fund, the debt service, and the community service fund. So that would be the recommended motion for the operating budget.
Right. Does that conclude your presentation? All right. At this time then, we'll move into the hearing. So basically, this is the time to ask questions prior to us making a motion to approve the resolution for the tax levy, which includes general fund, debt service, and community service fund. So at this time, is there any questions for Bonnie regarding the, the budget, or any of the information really that she just presented, which shows kind of historical valuation? For those people that got the annual report in here, there's information going back to what, you know, the taxes were, or the district valuation back 25 years ago. And then it takes the budget and breaks it down to a level where you need reading glasses to be able to pick up all the fine lines. But still, there are people that dive deep into these funds. It's a, as Heather alluded to, school finance is a very complicated thing because of, well, frankly, state mandates and certain funds that have to be maintained and so forth. So, and then there's transfers from those funds to actual spending and so forth. Is there any questions? This is my second call for any questions. Are anyone in the audience that comes forward with a question for Bonnie? I'm not seeing any, but I'll make the third call for any questions, comments regarding our budget. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion pursuant to the language in the proposed
So moved? Or do I have to read it?
All right.
Oh, sorry.
All right, so that would be on, on page 22, if you're looking in your booklet.
I propose that it be resolved that a tax in the total amount of $58 million, $14,814, $45 million, $198,000, $116,000, $116 for the general fund, 12,000, 12 million, sorry guys, $591,698 in debt service, and $225,000 in community service fund be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Right, we have a motion by Megan Rosowski. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second from Molly Powers. And I will now open it again to specific questions or comments related to the motion. And those three figures that Megan announced it, that's the breakdown for the total tax levy. So a little over 45 million goes into the general fund. We have debt service this year of about 12.6 million, and that can fluctuate from year to year, just the way that we're able to levy and pay down our debt. We're actually going to make bigger payments this year than we did last year, which were both elevated years, basically. And then the $225,000 for community service fund that was implemented at least one year ago, set it aside as a separate budget item is fairly constant. Is that right, Bonnie?
I believe it was two years ago.
Two years ago we did it, but I don't think it's changed in what we tried-
It's reduced. It was, yeah, it used to be 325, I believe, and-
Okay, so there is a reduction there, about a third over two-year period.
Yep.
All right. Any other comments, questions, or concerns regarding the 23-24 budget, or proposed levy? And again, just emphasizing, this is a proposed levy, and it retains that proposed status for about six weeks, at which time in late October at our special meeting, we will adopt the formal levy, which historically has been pretty close, if not slightly less than what we passed at this meeting.
Correct.
All right, now, hearing or seeing any further comments? All those in favor, and that includes everyone in the audience, everyone in favor of the motion before us, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and the budget is approved. The ayes have it, and the budget is approved. Going back to our agenda, now, at this time, we would have, we've adopted the proposed levy, so the new business is setting the annual meeting, and it was, it's always historically been the first Monday after Labor Day. So, second Monday, because Labor Day's always on the first Monday, right? That's why we don't do it the first Monday. But it is the um September 9th, Sep, September 9th, 2024, and um historically, it's always been at 7 o'clock. Um, for, you know, we had a motion last year to move it up to 6:30, but at this time, we, we don't have to be wedded to that time. Somebody wants to split the difference and make it 6:45, could do that, right? Would probably recommend that we go back to a nice round time of 7 o'clock, because then it gives us uh better flexibility with our regular meeting, that's always held immediately before the annual meeting, and it also gives constituents, parents, and so forth, folks who want to be here uh for the annual meeting, a better chance of getting here, especially if um that construction in Woodbury is not finished by next time this year. Uh, is there a motion then to set that time in date?
Uh, motion to set the time and date as 7 o'clock.
September 9th?
September 9th.
2024. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Kate Garza. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The mo, the uh, motion passes, and the meeting will be at 7 PM on September 9th, 2024. I didn't even check my calendar, just to make sure that that is a Tuesday, but it's a leap year, and I know that means that dates change by two.
Tim's already checked it.
Okay. Yep, all right. It just looks weird, because it looks so early with um Labor Day being September 2nd. I'm always used to Labor Day being later than that, but. All right, we have one more item under new business is other annual meeting powers. For those people who know the state statute, there's different powers that fall under there. I think the last time we utilized this, it was regarding uh school board members' pay. We went away from a uh flat and our monthly stipend into a per-meeting um payment. That hasn't, it's been on, what, eight years, seven, seven years at least, seven years ago, I think it was, it's been about the same. So if anybody wants to move on that or anything else, now's your time. All right, I'm not seeing anybody in the audience running up to the podium, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Kate Garza, a second by Heather Logan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned.